Take two. Good evening, everybody. My name is LP Mainville. I'm the Athlete Development Director for the OVA. I also oversee coaching. And so tonight, this is going to be the topic of this town hall. We've had multiple sessions over the past few weeks, actually, a couple of months. But this one will be very, very focused on coaching. I'm going to try to answer some of your questions related to coaching. And also give you a chance to kind of talk to me and talk to us at the OVA in terms of what you're hoping to see for coach support this year. So I will, in this town hall, if you've been to other sessions with us, this is going to be just slightly different. In the sense that I'm going to be using, I'm going to share my screen, but I'm using a software called AhaSlide to share my presentation, and this will allow you later on in the presentation to actually interact and provide some feedback. Sorry for that. So I will start sharing right now. And I'll just go to here. And so what you can do, so you'll be able to follow the presentation on my screen. But if you want to scan this with your phone, or just go to the URL that's at the top of your screen here, that will take you to AhaSlide, and we won't use it just now, but later on, once we get to the part where where I'm asking for your feedback, you'll be able to actually provide your feedback, and then we'll be able to see kind of what everybody says. It's anonymous, so it's pretty cool to kind of see, get a big group to interact essentially, okay? So the URL will stay at the top of the screen if you missed it. Just find it on your phone. Um, okay. So tonight, in order, I'll go over the coach eligibility policy for this year. I'll give you a little update on the NCCP, and talk to you a little bit about coach development in 2020, 2021. And there will be an opportunity to ask some questions throughout. But if you have some questions, you can actually ask them either in a chat box from this Zoom call. We have Calvin on the call. Hi Calvin. He will be monitoring the chat, so you can ask a question there, or you can ask it directly in AhaSlide. There's also, there should be a place for you to ask questions there once you're on that site, and then we can answer the questions either way, okay? So we'll make sure we answer all of them. So let's get started with the coach eligibility policy. You'll notice a change in the wording. In the past, we used to talk about a coach certification policy. And when we looked after last year, actually, there was, every year, essentially for the past three, four years, there was a little change year to year. And it made it very difficult for people to kind of follow along and what was going on. And, but there was an important update that was made a year ago for this past year's certification policy. And towards the, essentially just before everything got shut down in March, we had already gone through all of the coaches, seeing if they were going to meet the certification policy or not. And we had about 60% compliance. And we were going to have to find about 250 coaches at OCs. If OCs had happened. And, and we looked at that and to us, it was, it was a clear failure. There's no way that we could talk about that policy as a success in terms of having so, so many people not actually meeting their requirements. And so something was not aligned there between our policy, where we were requiring, and the needs of coaches. And so some of the issues with it included, like I said, the fact that it was kind of difficult to understand and manage. It was actually also difficult for us to manage at the OVA, keeping track of who's in what year and all that stuff. That was complicated. It was a time-consuming, it was time-consuming to meet all of the requirements in a given year. And we know that time is, is something that is, is, is an issue for a lot of us. We have busy lives. Another thing was that the requirements of the previous certification policy had to be fulfilled by the end of the year, which meant that a coach could essentially coach all year without having done any of the courses that were mandated, all the way until provincials. So the entire season, and then he could do some of the things a week before, and technically they would be fine. And, and the last thing was that the policy was based on fines, and it was enforced with fines, which is not necessarily something that we like to do. It doesn't create a great relationship between our staff and the coaches when we have to enforce this policy and then say, well, you know, you have to pay this fine. And what happened actually is that clubs would actually just budget for it. And just say, oh, this year I'm going to have this many coaches who will not meet the policy, and so we will budget this amount of money to pay for it, to pay the fines. And it was also seen as a money grab. That's, those are some, certain of the things that we, that we heard. And so there were a lot of things that we didn't like about it, that were kind of a negative. And so, so we started looking at it and decided to change something. And especially because it was becoming a barrier to entry, and that's where we would hear from some clubs saying, some coaches are interested in coaching, but they look at the certification requirements, and they just don't want to do it, right? So they decide they're not going to coach. And so that was a problem, and we wanted to address that. So what we did is, we met with our coach committee, sorry, I'll miss this slide here. And we had some discussions. And we really went to the roots of the policy itself and say, and look at why we were, why we had a policy in the first place. And what we talked about was that we wanted to have a safe sport environment, a safe environment for our athletes to play volleyball. And for that, as an organization, we wanted to make sure that each coach that was involved with an OVA athlete had at least a basic level of training. And that we had the certainty that they had that basic level of training before they stepped, set foot in a gym and worked with some youth athletes. We wanted to make sure that it was going to be accessible and available so that the requirements were going to be easily, easy to access for whoever, wherever they are in a province, at any time, right? So a lot of the stuff we heard before was, I don't have time, the workshop is not conveniently located, or placed in the calendar for me. So we wanted to make sure that the requirements would be able, a coach would be able to fulfill the requirements by doing the course online, so that it would be accessible for, for everybody everywhere. Another thing is, we wanted to move the time of meeting the requirements at the beginning of the season. Because it makes a lot more sense, it's way more responsible to, as an organization, to say, okay, well, we have some requirements in place, but are you going to meet them before you actually set foot in a gym? Right? You're not going to have an entire year to actually coach the athletes before you show that you've met them. That is not how a responsible organization works. And so we decided to, to move to start of a season timing for meeting the policy. We also took out the fines. So in this new policy, there are no fines, because if you don't meet the requirements, then you just can't coach. That's it. It's, it's plain simple. So we don't need fines anymore. And, and the last thing that we also wanted to make sure we did was that our policy was going to be monitored, I guess, and applied and enforced by OVA and the clubs. It was really important for us that clubs also got involved. We often hear from clubs that they do want responsibility, they do want to be in charge of their own stuff, they want to be in charge of their coaches. And so we said, yeah, let's go, let's do it, let's do it together. And let's have clubs get involved in verifying the requirements of their coaches so that they can have those discussions with the coaches. Oftentimes, what would happen is that a coach would actually not meet the certification requirements. They would get a fine, but the club president or club executive would not know about it until the day of provincials. And that obviously created some tensions. So with, with this new policy, clubs are going to be involved from the get-go, and that will make all that communication way better, way easier. So let's look at it. Let's look at that policy. I struggle with this. I always go, I always go two slides ahead. So let's look at it. I'm actually going to get out of this and pull it up for you. So we'll look at it together on the actual document. I have a lot of files open here. It's this one here. So in the introduction of the coach eligibility policy, we state the principles that are kind of at the, that are the foundation of this policy and why we, why we designed it this way. And then we go into the simple eligibility requirements. And like I said, we call it the eligibility requirements because while you need those requirements, you need to fulfill those requirements to be eligible to be registered as a coach in the OVA this year. So the requirements themselves are right here. So all individuals who are involved with youth athletes, and this includes a coach, someone who's registered in our new system as a coach or a club technical director in those roles, head coach or assistant coach, okay? So all individuals that will be essentially coaching or potentially working with the athletes in the gym have to meet those first, those first bullets right here. So the first one is something that everybody does anyways, and you've been doing for a long time, which is to fulfill the screening policy. So you need to have a vulnerable sector screen, so a police record check that is valid, so that was completed within the last three years. And you also have to annually complete the OVA screening disclosure form. Something that you do on a, on a regular basis, actually, every year. And additionally, so everybody will have to have completed the Making Headway module from the Coach Association of Canada. This is the module on concussions and preventing concussions, and knowing how to deal with them. And secondly, everybody will have to have completed the Coaches Association of Canada Safe Sport Training. This one is a new course that was released on April 2 of this year. And this is a course that was mandated by Sport Canada to all of the national sports organizations that all of their members, coaches, managers, referees, so on, that they must complete this, this, this new modules for, for safe sports. So this is actually, I'm going to talk about the Volleyball Canada policy in a few minutes, and it's part of it. So all coaches from Ontario will already have that done if they want to go to Nationals. So that's good. And everybody on our coach committee and on our staff agreed that this module was excellent, and that we wanted coaches to complete it. And so that specific module here, that Safe Sport Training may be the only new module that some of your coaches may have to do just because the other components were already in our past, in our past policies, but I'll come back on that. So those are for everybody, all right? Now, head coaches, so if you are registered as a head coach in your club, so in MRS, if your role is head coach on, on your roster, then you have to complete the Foundations of Volleyball, which also in the past would have been called Volleyball Canada eModules. And also the Making Ethical Decisions Online Evaluation. So those two were also in our previous certification policy, and they were some of the basic mandatory modules. We know that a lot of coaches, if they've already coached in the OVA, already have those two. But a new coach would not. You know, a new coach who just started, started coaching may not have these, so that's important to pay attention to these two here if you have a new coach. Now, these two are just for head coaches, but they also are the ones where there's a cost associated with them. So Foundations of Volleyball is about $89. And Making Ethical Decisions Online Evaluation is actually free if you completed the course. But if you haven't, and you're going straight to the evaluation, then it's $85. And so, and the way that we actually get the clubs involved here is that this here is the responsibility of the clubs to verify the eligibility of their coaches prior to registering them as members. So when, when club contacts or club executives, when they complete the club form on the OVA website this fall, they will have to verify and confirm that by checking the boxes, that they have verified that all their coaches are eligible. Okay, so that will be the first step of how we'll be managing this policy this year. So clubs will have to go through that, and I will walk you through a simple way to check all of your coaches in a couple of minutes. But clubs will have that responsibility to check on the locker for their requirements. And then once they confirm that, then their coaches can be registered, and they're good to go. And what we will do as a staff is that once, you know, the clubs have registered, once there's been a chance for coaches to sign up and to complete these requirements. So around late fall, we'll start doing some checks, and we'll start verifying on our own, just this first year, so that we can then contact the clubs and the coaches who may have, for example, signed up without actually completing these things, or a club president found a new coach halfway, they signed up, and then they were not part of the form that he submitted earlier on. Whatever the case may be, we'll do some checks, and then we'll contact those who don't meet the requirements, if we find any. And, and we'll, and we'll just have a warning in the first place. We'll give people a period of time to complete the requirements. And then if, if they're not done after the period of time, then we'll just remove the individuals from our membership. You have, if you are listed as a coach on your roster, you have to do this. And just so you know as well, a little warning, the way that we worded this is we really look at the role in NRS. So just a note for those who in the past have been listed as a head coach on their roster in NRS the entire year, and then for provincials decide that they are going to just sign up for provincials and just be in the assistant coach role. Well, first of all, this doesn't matter anymore because we're not actually checking by provincials. But it also doesn't matter because it's not about who you are during the game that you're playing, it's who you are on your roster in NRS. So what membership are you buying? If you're buying a coach membership in order to be listed as a coach on a roster, then you have to complete these requirements. So there's, there's no real way around these. These are very basic. They are in place to make sure that the athletes will have, you know, a safe place to play volleyball. And they are also there to make sure that as a community of coaches, we can trust that we all care about these things, care about providing quality volleyball to our athletes, and we speak, you know, the same language in some way. So yeah, so that's the eligibility policy for, for this year. Now, just a note again, I want to come back to this training here, this Coaches Association of Canada Safe Sport Training. This one is new since April. So some coaches may have been okay for the past so many years because they've done, you know, they, they did Making Headway, Foundations of Volleyball, and Making Ethical Decisions. They did that eight years ago. So for the past, you know, so many years, they had nothing to worry about. They knew they met all the requirements. They were certified coaches. It was, you know, they just coached, and then went to provincials, and everything was good. Now this year, that coach, well, will have to complete this new training if they haven't done it already, okay? So that, I want to bring your attention to this because it's a new module. And so unless someone has done it in the past five months, they likely don't have it, and we'll have to do it. And so it's, takes about an hour to take this, this module, and it's free. Easily accessible on, on the, actually, it's, you can access it from your locker, and I'll show you in a second. But I really want to pay, you to pay attention to this. And yeah, that's it. So make sure that even your most experienced coaches, who have been around for a while, that they also complete this one here. And yeah. So that's, that's about it. I will, before I take any questions, I will just show you real quick how you, as a club executive, a club contact, club president, how you can make sure that your coaches meet all the requirements. I'm just going to go back to my presentation. Let's put a little French in here. Oh. There you go. I thought I had that next, but I'll talk about Volleyball Canada's policy for a second before I show you that. Just to keep things in order with my presentation here. So Volleyball Canada decided at the same time as we, so we kind of brought this up with other provinces and with Volleyball Canada. They decided to go back and then look at their certification policy as well. And so they decided to make some modifications to their policy as well. And so their policy will look a lot like ours. But they added a piece to theirs, which will essentially require coaches who go to Nationals to have taken some part of the NCCP courses, whether that's Development Coach or Advanced Development Coach. And so for this year's Nationals, so for 2021, if you're going to go to Nationals, your coaches must have exactly the things that I just showed you. But head coaches also have to have completed their workshop. The workshop that's related to the context in which they coach. So 14, 15, and 16 new head coaches must have at least completed the Development Coach Workshop. If they're certified, then they're fine, because they would have completed that before. 17 new and 18 new head coaches, they must have completed the Advanced Development Coach Workshop this year for Nationals, okay? So again, if they're certified Advanced Development Coach, then they would have that, that workshop done. So they don't need to have the certification status. They need to have taken the workshop this year, okay? Now, the Volleyball Canada policy is just being done, being translated right now, so they're really only a few days away from communicating all of the details of their policy. But I've had the chance to see it, and again, it's essentially our policy is the same, except for this addition here for head coaches. So just a heads up, and just stay tuned for, obviously, the communication for Volleyball Canada, and some opportunities to perhaps ask them questions. So, so yeah. So let's go into how do you check? Okay, so how will you make sure that your coaches have all the requirements? Well, it's super, super simple, and it can be done really, really quickly. So again, coaches, clubs will have to fill out their club form to confirm their coaches meet the requirements. And you will go to the locker for that. So if you're a coach and you're working at a club, you're probably familiar with the locker, but if you're not, you go to this URL here. Calvin, you think you could put that in the chat? While I go, please? That'd be great. And all you need, so you're going to go to this website here, and all you need is the last name of the coach and their NCCP number. Now, that's something you're already collecting because you need that in your club form. So you have this information, so all you do is you go to, my Zoom bar is in the way. Okay. So you go to coach.ca, or you go to the URL I showed you, but an easy way to remember this is you go to coach.ca. And you see here at the very top right, it says Coach Transcript. You click on that, and it takes you to the URL that I just showed you. And that's the public, that's the public locker essentially. So it gives you access to anybody, all, any coach's transcript and what they've done for certification, as long as you have their NCCP number and their name. So I'll show you what happens if you just type my name and my NCCP number. And you go and check. So you would do that with the coaches on your, in your club. So as you can see here, this is my transcript. You see that I've done some tennis courses back in the days, and then you see all my volleyball stuff. Now, you could look through all of this to find all the modules that we're interested in. But there's a way easier way to do this. You just go to history, and you go to e-learning. You wait for a second while it loads. And then you will see all of the, essentially all of the e-learning things or modules that your coaches have done. And the three modules that we're interested in are all here. They're all e-learning modules. So what you saw in the previous window was all the courses that I've done in person and all that stuff, where those ones are the ones that I completed online. But those are the Making Ethical Decision Online Evaluation, which is of interest to us, Making Headway in Sport, and Safe Sport Training. So there you go. You can see right away that the coach has done all three components, all right? So again, you can look through all of this and look for it, but you have to look for it, okay? So as a head coach here, okay, I have volleyball e-learning. So that would be my Foundations of Volleyball. And then you can look down and try to look in multi-sport for Making Headway and all those things. But I'm telling you, just go to history, e-learning, you will find them. Now somehow, the Foundations of Volleyball don't appear here. And that's probably because it's not done through the coach.ca website, it's done through the Volleyball Canada website. For that one, I guess you will have to go through the certification to this full transcript. And you will look at the very top of their volleyball section. It's usually one in the first training that appears under the status of your coach, all right? And so you will see it here. It's either Volleyball e-learning or Foundations of Volleyball. All right? And so that's it. And so for your coaches who want to, who want to take the course, very simple. Okay, so just go to the locker.co.ca. All right? I'm just going to log in right here to my account to show you. Once you get here, once you log into your account, you just go to e-learning. Once it will allow me to click. Hello? Oh, there it is. And then once you're in e-learning, all of the available courses will show up on the left-hand side of your screen. And so here in available, you will have all, you will have the three multi-sport ones. So you will have Making Ethical Decision Online Evaluation, Making Headway, and the Safe Sport Training is also here. Once you click on that, it will ask you a bunch of questions, so it can give you the version of the module that is appropriate for you. We consider all of them as, as being okay. So just, you know, answer those questions, and it will essentially, yeah, it will do the work for you and give you that version that you need. Okay? Once you complete it, then it appears in your completed section. Okay, very simple. For the Volleyball Canada one, you go to coach.volleyball.ca. And if you don't have an account, you would create an account and then follow the steps. That's essentially what, the only thing that's in this, in this portal, is, is the e-modules. So you would just create an account or log into your account if you have one, and then go and take those, those courses, all right? So I'm gonna stop sharing this, and I want to know at this point if there are any questions. Calvin, anything that came up in the chat?
I think we're good. We've answered most of the questions that came up on the chat. So if there are any questions from the group, if they want to speak up, that'd be great. If not, then we can.
Yeah, well, we'll come back to it. We'll come back at the end for questions anyways, so we, we can do that if you, if you want to hold on. No problem. And if you see something, Calvin, just, just let me know.
Will do.
All right, so let's go back to our little AhaSlide here. Questions, we've gone through that. Okay, so a couple more things now. The coach eligibility policy was really the, the main piece of this, this section of this presentation. We really wanted to let you know about, about it and how it worked. But just a couple of updates for NCCP for those who will go to Nationals and have to take the courses. So the, the COVID-19 situation actually provided us, in Volleyball Canada, kind of an opportunity to to look at the way things are delivered and to try to make some modifications. And so volleyball Canada started a process, it was supposed to be a process to review the development coach workshop. And it kind of never happened, it was supposed to happen, I think, last year, but it kind of was pushed. And then March came around and now nobody could take the course in person anymore. So when they started to review, they started actually reviewing the course with an online delivery model in mind. And so they decided to actually create a version of the course and revamp the course so that it could be delivered online. So the development coach workshop will be delivered next week in Ontario completely online. It's a pilot, it's the first time that volleyball Canada will deliver it. We already have a full workshop with twelve coaches. And there is a limit of coaches right now because there's still an interactive part to the course that's really important. And they want to make sure that the the ratio of facilitator to coaches will be ideal. And so that pilot is happening next week, they will look at the, when I say day is volleyball Canada and the work group that they have, uh, which has some of our Ontario facilitators on it. But they will be looking at the result of this pilot, that it go well, whatever. They will make some modifications and then eventually we're hoping in the next month or so, we will get the okay to actually start delivering some of those online workshops ourselves with the facilitator, facilitators that we have in Ontario. So you can expect at some point between now and December to see a bunch of those online development coach workshops pop up. And so that you can sign up if you need to, or if your coaches need it, that will be available online. Now, for the advanced development coach workshop. It's a little bit different. So right now volleyball Canada is looking at how certain portions of the course could be delivered online. So they're not actually looking at revamping the entire workshop. They're looking at taking the classroom portion of the workshop and seeing how that could be delivered online prior to meeting in person for the on-court, the on-court section essentially. Okay, so when, when we revamp a workshop, we need to work with the CAC and there's a whole chain of, you know, communication and approvals and all that stuff that need to happen. That's what volleyball Canada went through with the development coach workshop, but not at that stage yet with the advanced development coach workshop. So right now it's just a matter of figuring out, okay, can we deliver this portion online? So that, you know, we're not together in a classroom in a gym for two and a half days, right? Can we actually shorten the need or the time where we need to be together in the same place? Uh, so that's what they're looking at. And so once we have some updates, we'll look at it with our facilitators and we'll communicate with you what's what's going on, what's available and how the the workshop is going to be delivered. Okay, so so stay tuned and we're really, we're really confident that we'll, we'll be able to manage something that will kind of facilitate this process. But, uh, but yeah, we're really hoping to be able to deliver that workshop as well. If we were not able to do it for some reason, this year, by the way, a national still happened. Um, I'm sure that volleyball Canada would probably have some sort of accommodation for people who were not able to get that that course done. But that's a conversation that we can have if needed, when needed. Okay. So last thing I want to talk to you about is a little bit of what we're working on. And this is where I also really am looking forward to get some of your feedback. So coaching in 2020 and 2021 and and how is the OVA going to support you guys as coaches in the clubs? Well, one of the things that we're we're doing and this, the thought process around that started before. Before our shutdown in in March, but we've been wanting for quite a bit now to develop a coach development plan essentially and and build a plan on the long term that will help us meet the needs of the coaches and of the technical directors and of the clubs. And so the first step, and we worked with our coach committee to develop a survey, a survey to assess the needs. Uh, and but a survey that's really solely focused on on coaching and and your situation. And so what we did is we had a bunch of interviews with some coaches from across the province. So we created some profiles and then randomly selected a bunch of coaches that met those profiles. And did some one-on-one interviews with with these coaches to kind of start finding some of the themes that come out. And we use that information to build a detailed survey that we're going to send out to all of you at some point in October. And the goal of that survey will be to really nail down like what are the needs of the coaches across the province? What are we doing that's good, right, that meet, that meets those needs? What are we not doing? What are the needs of our coaches and technical directors that are not met? And how can we meet them? So how can we support our coach community better? So that we have a thriving coach community and and also just like, so that we can all get better as as coaches or athletes can be served better. And yeah, so that long-term plan is something that we want to build over the next few months with the results from this survey. So keep an eye open for that, this is going to happen next month. And we're really, really looking for forward to get your feedback on that because that's what's going to help us build the the resources, the tools, the types of workshops that the types of workshop delivery, right, and and course delivery that we will use over the next, uh, over the next years. So we're really looking in the long term because some of those measures may actually take time to to put in place. But we really want to have, just be a little more organized around how we. We support coaches. As opposed to kind of do what we've done before where we essentially, oh, you know, let's have at least one symposium every year and then let's, let's put these clinics here and there, but you know, we had some information, but we really want to have more information in order to make more informed decisions essentially. So that's one of the things that we're going to do, so look out for that. And the other thing that we're working on is. An OVA Coach Academy. And we are working on this for for the fall because well, we recognize that it's going to be more difficult to get to in-person workshops. And also that means that it's going to be a bit more difficult to connect. Usually coaches would connect together in tournaments, right, where they would see each other. You would connect with other coaches from your club when you go to practice perhaps. Now, the interactions are going to be limited this year in this fall. And so we wanted to make sure that we were able to provide some resources to to you guys that will help us as, you know, staff and coaches, but also you guys between yourself as coaches to connect. And so on top of that, we know that the situation right now requires a lot of adjustments. So there are adjustments required in the way that you run practice. And maybe even in the way that you support your athletes, because maybe you don't even have a gym right now, or maybe you only have a gym once a week. And you want to keep your athletes engaged because you like connecting with them. But you don't have that opportunity to get into gym as often as you'd like to. So perhaps you're going to do some virtual training. Well, we want to share some of that information, we want to share some information on how do you adapt your training to meet the the requirements of our return to play protocol, right? How do you train, why respecting the safe and healthy, sorry, safety and healthy guidelines around COVID-19? How do you, what, what and how do you do virtual training with your athletes, right? This summer, we delivered virtual training to hundreds of athletes with Team Ontario online. And so we've accumulated a lot of, I guess, best practices, but also presentations, videos, you know, that stuff that we're putting together right now and that we're packaging in a way that will help you. Use this information to run your own training virtually with your athletes. All right, and so and then on top of that, well, we want to essentially meet your needs there. So we want to know, you know, what, what do you like to learn, you know, technically, tactically? You know, with practice plans and drills plans, like what are, what is it that you're looking for? And we're hoping to create a platform that will allow us to share that information, but that will also eventually allow you guys to share information between each other. Now, we're going to be taking some small steps, but guaranteed at some point in the next month or so, uh, you're going to hear more from us with, um, in regards to this, um, this project. And we're going to start slowly but surely sharing some information and providing some resources that you can use. And then with your feedback. And your questions and all that stuff, we're going to be able to actually create the content that you want. We're going to be able to reach out to the coaches, our, our, our Team Ontario coaches, our university coaches, our coach developers, ask them your questions, bring the answers back and kind of like start creating a real community, right, like we call ourselves a community of coaches, but you know, hopefully, we hope that this platform will help us interact more and stay up to date with things and really kind of stimulate our, our desire to learn more and to and to share and to get better as coaches. Um, yeah, and so really exciting project to work, uh, to work on right now. Uh, we'll have more information for you very shortly, but just want to note that that was coming up. Now, before I go to questions, I just wanted to share a couple of things regarding training online because I do know that it's the case for a lot of people, a lot of people will be in the situation where they need to. They need to train their athletes online. And I really think that right now, because finding core time is more difficult. Well, it's actually a great opportunity to tackle some of the training that we don't usually do when we don't have time because we train three times a week, for example, and we have tournaments all the time. We may be able now this fall, while we're waiting for gyms to be available, to take care of training in the areas of nutrition, mental performance, maybe strength and conditioning and all those kind of off-core training aspects that are very important for athletes. And so I wanted to share a couple of opportunities. One of them right here is about nutrition. Uh, this for performance is a program, is an online program that we've been using with Team Ontario Elite for two years now, this is going to be the third year we use it. We work with the founder Pearl Narenberg. She's our nutritionist for indoor Team Ontario Elite. And she built this platform over the years and it's, it's, it's gone so far in the past two years and it's, it's really an incredible platform now with so much great content and various levels of 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 programming for all kinds of needs. Her platform is super engaging, she has an app, um, she has, you know, stuff online. You can have access to sessions with her. She deals with individuals, with teams, even families, she gets the parents involved. You know, depending on kind of how deep you want to dive into nutrition. You can just choose, you're right, you can choose a level of commitment that you want. And it, and it's really awesome. So like what she's going to do with some of our Team Ontario athletes this year is it kind of a, she has kind of a challenge thing where each month there's some education and then a challenge around it. And the athletes get to to cook and then there are kind of their prizes for, you know, the winners of the of the of the challenge. And so it's very, uh, very engaging and she's really, really good at formatting her information and the education she does around nutrition in a way that works really well with the youth athletes and with our teenagers. So she's actually offered to do a little info session on Wednesday. And Wednesday, Wednesday of this week. So, um, yeah, so if you want, uh, and I think I didn't, I didn't put the time there. Huh? I didn't put the time and I can't remember the time, but I think it's on the invitation. I lost it, I don't know why I can't, I can copy it. Okay, let's go find it together because, um. Because I want to show you and I can't remember the time, oops. At four P dot com forward slash OVA. Let's see what happens. Oh, there it is. Okay, eight thirty PM. Yeah, so on Wednesday, she's going to do an info session. And so you can register now, the thing that she wants is essentially if, even if you can't be there, but you want to have the information, register and then she'll send you the recording and the information she shared with, uh, and I think she wants to offer you guys like a special price or something like that. So, um, for like for your team. So if you want to have that and you want to know that, just sign up, register for the session. And even if you can't make it on Wednesday, um, she'll send you the information. Obviously, obviously, if you're there, you can ask some questions and she's, she's really, really nice. And I was actually surprised that she was going to do that for for us and for our coaches, you know. Uh, this week on Wednesday, I spoke to her on Friday and she was like, hey, next, next Wednesday, I can talk to your coaches. I was like, great. Um, so I'm very thankful that that she wanted to to do this. Again, connect if you can, you just go to, like I said. The zoom window is always in the way. Yeah, that's what, like I said, at four P dot com forward slash OVA, okay? So. That's for nutrition. Now for mental performance. We've had this book for a few years now, but we still have some and it's still available on our website and our, uh, on our OVA store. And it's the Trainwave book. I have a copy right here. This book is fantastic, it's fantastic. If you wonder what to do to get your athletes to reflect and self-evaluate and do some mental, you know, work on mental performance and and talk about confidence and talk about visualization and take about, talk about stress, for example. Right, a lot of athletes, oh, I'm stressed, it's a big game or something like that. This book covers those topics with self-directed activities. Okay, so it's a workbook with some information, but it's, it's, it's really, really good. There are five chapters, each chapter has three parts and each part has, you know, a bunch of activities. So there's, I think, like sixty or something activities in there that your athletes can do. The sections are creating your vision, increasing your comfort zone, managing your performance, exploring your stress and supporting your confidence. And I've done this with, you know, my teams before. Uh, we've done that with Team Ontario Elite. And it's really awesome where you can get out of the athletes because you just ask them to do the activity. And then they do it and then in some of them, you can ask them to share with each other. If you want them to kind of talk about that between themselves. Uh, some of the activities are actually built around the athletes talking to each other. And then you can ask some questions and have a conversation with your group about one activity and kind of pull out some stuff that's great. And the great thing about that is that you don't, you don't do the teaching, the book does it and the kids do it. So all you do is ask questions, you go in the activity that you gave them. And then you kind of look at it, you pull some situations, right, that that you know that would apply to this activity. And then you get the kids to talk about it and they come up with their own solutions, it's great. It's really awesome. And then all you got to do after is pull it back and bring it back to the, to the book. And when a situation arises in real life, just go, hey, you know, girls, you remember when we had this conversation around the book? Hey, remember what you said? Yeah, that's what you said, are you doing that? No, great. You know what to do now, right, like it's, it's, it's really awesome and really helpful. So that book is available in our OVA store. You get there by going to, uh, there's multiple ways you can go there to the store on the OVA website, but. You know, if you're, I I find the easy way for the coaches is to go to coaches, mental training. This takes you here, right? It's a page about the book, order your copies and then takes you right away to our OVA store. And there's three options here for you, depending on how many you want for your team. Either six, ten or twelve with different price points. So I really encourage you to take a look at it and you can email me if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, a really, really cool tool and it's a, and it's a workbook for the athletes, right? So it's not something that, you know, you're allowed to buy one of and then photocopy the activities and stuff like that, there's copy right here. So we advise against that. Uh, this is not our property, but it's been built by Kyle Paquette, who is the men's national team mental performance coach and his team. And so they obviously put a lot of effort into it. Mental Performance Coach and his team. And so they obviously put a lot of effort into it and should be. You know, compensated for their work. So it's their book and we just use it and also promote it because we think it's a great resource for for our coaches. Okay? And with all that said. That takes me to my last slide, which is where I want to hear from you. And I don't know if many of you guys are on here, but we'll try it anyways. So with all that I said here, I'm really curious to know, I want to hear from you, what you would like to see from the OVA this fall. In terms of support to coaches. So if you're new to the call, just go to this URL up here and you will see this and you will get a chance to answer the question. And as people answered, the answers should pop up anonymously on the screen. How? I think there's only three of you on there, so I don't know if we'll have, oh. We're at nine now, so that's great. So I would really appreciate if you could just put something in there, like if what you've seen so far is is good for you, great. If you'd like to see something else, you know, please let us know here. If you prefer sending an email, you can do that as well. I'm happy to 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 read your your comments and suggestions in an email. But I was kind of hoping that we could test this out here and 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 see what comes up. And so I'll give you. Give you twenty seconds, maybe, to see if anything comes up. And then if I will, we'll move on. So mentorship. I'm, if if that's okay. Whoever wrote that, it'd be great to, if you want to, unmute yourself and and. And maybe give a bit more detail about what you mean by that, like mentorship from who? In 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 about what, you know, practice planning, drill planning, practice delivery. So obviously, no stress if 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 it's not okay.
No, that was for me. It's just a basic mentorship on any. On on the full aspect of coaching from especially for for new coaches. I I was able to hook up with somebody within our club and that worked out quite well, but. That since I've been coaching, that has been one of the things that just hasn't been there. So any type of even having a pot where you can go. And have people put in questions and maybe somebody can go back and answer them or a connection to talk, anything along those lines.
Cool. Thank you, Louise. I, okay, that's great. I mean, answering questions, of course, that's that makes a lot of sense. Online training, which is already decided, especially for the coaches up north. Okay, yeah, online training, yeah, that that was one of the reasons why we modified our our policy there, right? So that it would be easy for everybody anywhere in in Ontario to meet the requirements. And so, so, yeah, I mean, I think it's the the one thing that's kind of encouraging with the current situation is that. It's it's been an. An eye opener, right? In terms of, okay, well, or I guess like a catalyst for some of the projects that were kind of in the air about, oh, let's. Move some courses online, right? It's accelerated that that transition. So I I expect to see a lot more training online to to happen. So anyways, if you have any other suggestions, please send them by email. I don't want to take up all of your evening here, so we'll move on. And. One more here, I guess. The resources on COVID setup for practices and virtual plant or virtual training, which you mentioned. Webinars like in the spring, so. I guess I'm gonna give you a little scoop, but we'll be, we'll be putting together some more webinars in October. So stay tuned for that. We knew that, we know that you liked it in April because you had a lot of participation, so we're bringing them back in October. A session or two about coaching, how to manage phases, precautions, activity ideas during COVID, yeah, something similar to the sessions in April. Awesome. Okay, well, I'm happy to hear that because those are the things that we're actually currently working on, so. That will meet you where you where you are, where you are, yeah, hopefully. Okay. So I will take some questions now. I'm just gonna stop sharing my screen. Let's look at each other if we're going to talk and answer questions. Kelvin, was there anything in the chat that popped up?
No, I've been answering them as they're coming up, so we're good.
Okay. I'm just reading. Just reading a question from. From AHA slide, seems to be a very. Seems to be a very precise question here, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it. So Kelvin, do you say there was nothing in the chat?
No, I already addressed them.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Calvin. Okay, so there was one question asked on AHA slide. It's not, it's not really, it's not very related to to our topic here. But I'm happy to stay and, you know, talk about it with a person if if you want to. Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's it's not related to to this topic and I don't think it's it's relevant to this audience at this point. So, okay, well, if there's no more questions, in this case. I will say that the session was recorded, so it's going to be put up online as soon as possible. And so you can rewatch if you if you want to. But if you know coaches who were not able to attend, please ask them to go and check it out online. And there are next town hall, there's been a modification, so if you're, you know, a regular on our town hall sessions. The next town hall was supposed to be on the twenty eighth of September, but it's been pushed to the following week, so it's going to be on October fifth. And it will be about referees or for referees or for whoever is interested in hearing about. Officiating in Ontario. Is that correct, Kelvin?
Yeah, October fifth for referees.
Excellent. So stay tuned for that and register if that's something you're interested in. If not, I'm trying to remember if there's anything else that I need to let you know. But I can't think of it. So I really hope that you're able to find more time. That your trout and like athlete selection process is going well. And I wish you great fall and I'm sure I will see you again on a Zoom call soon. In another town hall or something like that. Okay, so stay tuned for all of that great coaching stuff that's coming up. And again, don't hesitate if you have other suggestions or. Yeah, or or questions. Okay? Also Bruce, okay, I will answer that one. Bruce says, did MRS come up? So MRS was supposed to go live today, but we had. We're just putting the last pieces together. Our payment processor was just finishing up like what they have to do in order for everything to work well. So we're expecting it to to get working in, you know, a day or two. So so stay tuned for that. And yeah, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be very much, very much longer. So we appreciate your patience with that. And just a reminder that all members from last year still are members until the twentieth of September. So for all insurance, that's covered. And if you do have new players who were not members last year that come to your tryouts or sessions. You just have to get them to fill out the the regular, the usual waivers that we have at at tryouts. That those waivers are available on our website if you go to club resources. So, yeah, we should be all good from that front. Okay. All right, guys. Have a great evening and a great weekend of volleyball with as much court time as you can. Okay, take care.
Thanks, everyone.